Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. This is now 6:00 P.M., and the January 8th, 2024 City Council meeting will now come to order. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we gather here today to seek your guidance and blessings as we convene this City Council meeting. We humbly ask for your divine presence and fill our hearts and minds. Bless each member of this council, unite us as one during these trying times, and guide us to make the best decisions for our city. Grant us the strength and patience to navigate the challenges we face, especially in the weight of recent councilmember resignations. May your wisdom guide our decisions, and your love unite us in building a prosperous and harmonious future for our city. Amen. Now will everyone rise and join me in the prayers?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, and I God, the visible, who literally teach me justice for all.
Ms. Rose, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Gaddis.
Present.
City Manager Kyle Reefer.
Here.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Renee. I'd like to remind everyone, while we are only four councilmembers, for us to have meetings, it requires all four of us to be present going forward to have a quorum. Moving forward, we're on to item number one, which is approval of the agenda. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I'd like to remind everyone that this council needs a vice mayor. Would someone like to amend the agenda to include Atlantic Vice Mayor as item 13 dot one on the agenda? Motion made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Kim Shaw Elliott. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda is amended. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The amended agenda is approved. Now we move on to item number two. This is citizen comments. If any citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand and wait for your call on. We ask that you limit your time to no more than three minutes, and remember to direct all questions and comments to the council. If any councilmembers would like to respond to citizen comments, you know the drill. If any city manager or city attorney would like to address citizen comments, we'll give you that time shortly. Would any citizen like to address the council about any topic not already on the agenda? Yes.
Happy New Year, Bill Lusk, Higginson's Triumph West. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say thank you all for stepping in there for us, fighting the fight. We're here with you. I know there's some challenges on the councilmembers, but on behalf of many, I just wanted to say thank you. For those listening that are not here, I think it's really important. There's a petition out there that I think is really important that our mayor put together. If you haven't signed it, I'd like you to ask to review it, ask questions, sign it, move it on. It's very important. Thanks again, all.
Thank you, Mr. Lusk. Would any other citizens like to make a comment? All right, citizen comments are closed. Now we are on to a presentation from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department, beginning with the monthly law enforcement report. Who is presenting tonight? Please come up and give us your name, and let's have it.
Sure. Good evening, council. My name is Sergeant Wolpert with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. And this evening, I'm going to present the November 2023 monthly analysis for crime statistics that occurred in the city of Bel Air Beach. And actually, I'm pleased to report, this is a very good report for this month, and if you look at the report, there's actually only one motor vehicle theft. There's no violent crime, no murder, sex offenses, or robberies that have occurred, and only one motor vehicle theft that occurred in November. Interestingly to note, for that case, the vehicle was actually recovered, and the person that had lost that vehicle or that was stolen from had lent it to another friend, and it was recovered. All right, there were three people that were arrested on several different charges through the month of November, two of which were DUIs, and then accompanying controlled substance offenses and drug paraphernalia offenses. None of those were resolved from the crash. The vast majority of our events that occurred in November, there's 485 events, and we're at 581 units responding to those events, and the vast majority of those were direct patrols, traffic stops, or house checks. A lot of our folks from out of town haven't returned, so our house check numbers will probably drop over the next several months. And then finally, we only had one crash in the city. It was actually a single-vehicle crash versus a pole, Duke Energy Pole, not a city-owned property, and there was no injuries in that crash. And that's all I have to report to. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much. I'm glad that we had an abbreviated report this time because we have no report in our agenda. I'm not sure what happened to it, but we were trying to listen closely, and it didn't sound like we had a whole lot that was important. Council, any questions? No? All right, thank you so much. You're welcome. All right, now we're on to the monthly code enforcement report, which is included in our agenda. Deputy Trump, you have the floor. And is everybody met with Deputy yet?
I do not believe so. Just to let you all know, I am Deputy Richard Trump, Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. I have just a brief history. I have just taken over for your code enforcement from Steve Klopbeck, who is sitting behind me and giving me support tonight. Just a brief history is I've been with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office for, I'm in my 39th year now. I retired after 37 years, came back immediately doing various task force, helping with training and everything as a reserve, and I got a call asking if I'd be interested in doing this, and I jumped at the opportunity. So I appreciate you all working with me, and while I'm learning here, some new tasks, and I'm very excited to do so. As far as your monthly code enforcement report, basically, we had 38 for, I'm sorry, for the month of December, we had basically 38 calls for service for code enforcement. With those, we basically had 29.73% was dealing with unpermitted remodels. We had 18.92% construction-related nuisances. Other vehicle and traffic, which may be our own traffic stops because we do some traffic and other related tasks to that, that was 10.81%. Boat, RV, or pods in driveways was 8.11%. Unmaintained pools was 5.41%. Leaks in the front yard or other nuisances related to that is 5.41%. Plant overgrowth calls was 5.41%. Parking on the grass is 5.41%. Being fenced or a wall in disrepair, 5.41%. Worn-out paint on the house was 2.70%. And clutter left in the yard is 2.70%. So with this, obviously, in the past, we were trying to reach out and hit just about everything that we possibly can in order to keep the city of Bel Air Beach clean and tidy. Any questions?
Counselor? Yes, Ms. Roberts?
The unpermitted remodeling, do you find that it's a lack of knowledge of the contractors, or is it more so people just trying to get away with it?
In most cases that I have dealt with so far, I understand I've only been doing about half of the month of December. In the case that we've had so far, I would say probably about half of those is not having knowledge that they need exact permits for what they are doing, because they are doing, you know, minor things like maybe just sprucing up a bathroom or something of that nature. Ran across that. They didn't realize that they needed it. I ran across a case just the other day, though, where I made contact with, obviously, some contractors that were going into a garage carrying a whole bunch of construction, and made contact with them. They were very knowledgeable that they didn't have permits, even though they tried to tell me. I went back and to find the permits, and I run them through the county plus the city, and they started squirting like cockroaches. So needless to say, they were aware. So it's probably about half and half.
Okay. Give you the ideas onto how, I'm confident, Kyle, that if any contractor comes in and asks our city if they need to have a permit, then you guys take it from there, and there's no issues. Are there any ideas, creative ideas, that other towns might use or that we use to increase the opportunity for contractors to stop and ask us before they start any work? I mean, obviously, the ones that are just trying to beat the system, they're not going to do that.
Correct. The, I think that they have plenty of opportunity throughout the week. Most of your good contractors, you know, the ones that are legitimate, they know that they need to at least stop into the city, at least make contact and say, hey, we're going to be working out here, we're doing such and such work, you know, do we need permits for this type of work? The legitimate contractor's going to know that.
Okay.
The other half, just as you said, the other half, you know, they're going to try and do something shady. So, you know, whether it be on the weekends or however, the homeowner's going to try and do the same thing, but we're trying to get out here, I'm trying to get out here, you know, at least one day on the weekends or once in a while, I'm trying to catch those too. So we're trying to, you know, keep everybody totally aligned with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, one comment is that I've noticed recently that when new pools have been installed, it seems like there are frequently discharge of water and other debris down the street, and then you see sludge and stuff going into the drain, the drains. So I don't know if that's a model of construction-related nuisances.
If it's coordinated, if it's relatively clean, coordinated water, it would not be, but sludge or anything of that nature would, you know, possibly be a hazard. All I could say is if anybody sees something like that, give us a call, and we'll respond, and we'll check it out.
Thanks for your attention.
Anyone else? No? All right, thank you very much, Deputy. Very nice to meet you again.
Thank you.
All right, now we have a presentation from the Pinellas Suncos Fire and Rescue District. Please come up and give us your name, rank, and serial number.
Good evening, thanks for having me. Assistant Chief Doug Igley, in charge of fire prevention. Chief Dickinson sends his regards. He is up representing our fire district in Tallahassee, which is, will directly, obviously, benefit your city if all goes well. So I'm here to, this evening, to provide our monthly report for December 2023. Before I do that, some of the online contracting stuff is something that I try to keep an eye on, too. When it comes to the multifamily business, or businesses, residents and business, they have a lot of fire protection systems. So sometimes people go in there and go, we'll find lock sprinklers, and they do these modifications that affect the fire protections thing. So I provided my card to that gentleman, because obviously, you guys are pretty far away from where my office is, but when I drive off and down to the beach, I keep an eye out for those things as well. And I've made contact with code enforcement from the county and the insurers, and Kyle and I have had some other discussions about it. So it is important, and we are, we do work together to look out for the residents of this community. So with that being said, as far as the fire training, my colleague, Chief Carpanez, this is his area, but in the month of December, our firefighters participated in a total number of 524.93 hours of firefighter training. And to close out the year for 2023, that's a combined hour for our 36, now 39, folks of 10,375 hours of training that our men and women have done to ensure that they're knowledgeable about our profession. When it comes to medical, they, towards the end of the year, our medical training kind of goes down. They try to knock everything down and leave the end of the year for those stragglers that may have missed something out there. And remember, we're part of an entire county system when it comes to our medical training. So total, we had an online continuing medical education in December, and that consumed 132 hours, and total of 1,503 and a half hours of medical training for the year, for a total number of training hours close to 12,000, it's 11,878 hours of training. So again, we always give kudos to those men and women. We continuously learn, just like every other profession, and, you know, ours are ensuring that we're up to date and make sure that we're able to protect your folks and the property that you have around here. So speaking of that, in what, December, we, well, actually, not just us, responded to a few, four, six, 11 calls within the city limits. And of those, there was, it appears to be nothing, mostly sick folks and a couple of other falls, so nothing major that I see in the days. The thing that, again, that we're trying to work on, one of the reasons that the chief is up in Tallahassee, is trying to get, this specific one, is trying to get money to refurbish our existing Station 27 while we work also on securing our property in the north end of Indian Rocks Beach to construct a new Station 27, which will allow us to provide those critical services to you folks who pay the taxes. I can tell you, Engine 44, which is Clearwater, ran 18 of those calls in your area. That, you folks pay the tax for. They only maintain the 77.78% compliance. And Mayor, as you know, that compliance is supposed to be at 90% everywhere, everywhere in the county. So those numbers are concerning to us as a district. We want to ensure that we can improve that. We feel with the plan that we put in place, moving out north, we're going to drastically improve those numbers so that we can get you into that 90th percentile. Coincidentally enough, Station 27 ran one of those calls within the city, and we had 100% compliance. So we're not sure, again, the distance from 44 down here is significantly closer than from 27. So not sure if it's a crew issue or what it is over there at Station 44. I can't comment on how they do things, but I can tell you that we want to service you the best that we can. Give me one second, I'm going to pull my notes out of my phone. As far as fire prevention goes, this in December, we, all right, district-wide, I didn't break it down in the Bell Air Beach, but I know approximately a third of them over up here, we performed 134 annual fire inspections, 60 area inspections, and we've performed 16 short-term rental inspections as part of the program that we implemented in Indian Rocks Beach. We cited 303 violations, which my team and I are actively working on clearing. As a matter of fact, on my way up here, I was in a conversation with a gentleman who represents one of your condos just a little bit north of here, and he is working diligently to come back into compliance with a couple of issues that they had in one of the buildings. As far as public education, we installed three smoke detectors at two separate residents' homes, none in this area, two were on the mainland, and one was in Indian Rocks Beach. Our folks spoke with a half a dozen or less, at least if they documented, as far as public education, handing out fire safety materials and things like that. Lastly, we are excited to participate in the upcoming health fair. In October, I hired Stacy Schwab. She is the wife of one of our division chiefs in logistics, and she is now the point contact person for all of our public education efforts. And she is also working on the short-term rental program, as well as assisting myself and Inspector Hill in our other annual inspections. We have obtained some funding from the county, which we've, we're working hard on as far as bringing some additional folks up here to participate in the health fair, and we'll be talking about fall prevention and some paramedics and stuff, and I believe they're going to have some, offer up vital site checks and things like that. So I know she's worked with Kyle on setting that up, so we're going to be excited about that. We just have talked with, amongst ourselves, we have an open RFQ for the design bill and the P3 process for the reconstruction of Station 28. So we spent about six hours this morning ranking those folks, and we're actively looking forward to making our recommendations to our fire commission over the next couple of months, so that we can, we're getting that money spent, which, if you remember, was $3 million from Pinellas County, $2 million in ARPA funds, and $1 million that they owed us for one of the legal proceedings that we had. So we are excited about that. Again, that will benefit you folks. We can get that station up and running, that'll be our EOC. We look forward to getting our folks off in a permanent place. So the district has come a long way in almost 20 years that I've been involved, and it's, things are looking up, and it can't be done without the support of our local communities, including your city. So we certainly appreciate that, and we look forward to making progress and keeping you updated.
Counselor, any questions? I do, just curious, what do you estimate the timeline is to begin construction on the new?
Sure, that's one of the things, I think we came to the consensus, obviously, earlier when we were talking about these rankings, and we put some specific things in that RFQ and how to rank these books, where we determine, obviously, timeframe to start and complete construction, and the budgeting process always, you know, we did come to the voters and ask for that increase in taxes. We want to make sure that we spend that money responsibly, like we said we would, so make sure that we choose the right firm when coming in, at our budget at least, and getting, moving forward. We have our commission meeting, it's already on the books, it's going to be in before we can get this process done. So what I believe, and don't quote me on this because I don't make the final decisions, but I'm guessing at our next commission meeting, we will choose at least one or two to come present their case, let's say, out of our top three ranked. We can ask them to come in and give us a presentation to the board, and then we would also ask the P3 partnership, which is the different RFQ, to come in and make their presentation, and then the chief will present his recommendation to go through with negotiation. So don't quote me on this, but I would say, hopefully, we'll break that, break it around no later than June, but hopefully, the stars have to align. We've got to make sure, obviously, there's lots of processes and procedures that we have to do through, just like you folks do. So we want to make sure that all our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted, that make, that doesn't hold us up. So that would be, I would say, we have to go in, make a recommendation, and they have to vote, and then we have to go and meet these folks and then start our negotiations and say, yes, we're going to bring it on, and let's move forward from there. So I would say no later than June, and looking at, I don't, I'm allowed to exactly say the dates, but less than, the maximum was a little bit, close to 24 months for total construction, and some of them were as little as, let's say, 18 months. So depending on the firms, but again, as you folks are well aware, you can't, some of these things you just can't, can't go on. So those are their best estimates, I'm sure. So we're probably looking at a two-year, a two-year window from when we break down to when we take the keys.
All right.
We have our fingers crossed, we're certainly keeping you updated on it, and we look forward to getting this process started, just as much as everybody else does.
Absolutely. All right, well, thank you so much for coming out tonight, and I appreciate the extensive report.
Thank you, folks.
All right, we are on to item number five, which is a presentation of the GF O A Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. In the past, we walked up, handed a certificate, and there was no one really to receive it. So rather than going through all that, what I'm going to do is just read what it's about, and then I'm just going to walk over and hand this to Mr. Reefer, and then we'll move forward. So this is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. It's presented to the city of Bell Air Beach, Florida, for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2022. Is that right? That can't be right.
Yes.
It is 2022?
Yes.
All right, it just seems like 2023 just ended.
Yep.
By Executive Director and CEO Christopher P. Moriel. So on behalf of the CF, or GF O A, we appreciate your efforts and. All right, we're on to item number six. It's the moment everyone's waiting for, which is the city attorney report. Mr. Mora, you have the floor.
Sorry to disappoint in the event anyways you're waiting. Thank you all. I do want to start, I think the sentiment expressed by your resident is well stated. Thank you for your service to your community. Thank you to your colleagues who left you, or left you as peers at the end of the year. I always, when I have the opportunity to present to public officials in education, I do start by thanking you, because the process doesn't work without you, and I think that was very palpably felt this last few weeks as we looked towards the future of this community. So as your city attorney, but also as somebody who just values the process that we have in our state, thank you for your service to the community. As you see, we have four members out of our seven, and these are the seated members. We have the election coming up in March that should hopefully fill some of these, in addition to anything the town may do and the city may do in the interim to fill those. We also have the charter amendments proposed relating to the configuration of this community. Apart from that, we also have the joy of knowing that session starts tomorrow. The legislative session begins tomorrow, Tuesday, January 9th, and will end Friday, March 8th, as my firm's done. In its tenure as your city attorney, we will closely monitor that. There was some mention made of the short-term rental program administered by the fire department. While this community has restrictions against that, there is some legislation proposed that should not, in its current form, impact your restrictions. Today, it just got a House order, and it's already moved through one committee in the Senate, and that's something a lot of Bay Area communities are watching closely, and of course, something we would watch for you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. As it relates to the vacancies on the council and the state of councils and commissions and all over across the state, I can tell you there are more questions than answers, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the city attorney? No? Well, I'd like to go ahead and give you the heads up. This is, this is the council after the election. There will be no changes at this time.
Correct.
Unless we are able to appoint. So I'd like to take just a few moments to let everyone know that even though there's more detailed invasive financial reporting, I'm hoping that there are more than four people in this community that are willing to step up and, and help us out. Obviously, we just discussed that if we don't have more than four people sitting here in the desk, we can't have the meeting. So we're, our hands are tied right now, and I'm begging the residents of Bell Air Beach, if you know someone that may be a good candidate, that would be interested and is not so worried about the financial disclosure, please reach out to the city manager, and let's see if we can fill these seats. Other than that, Mr. Mora, I saw, and forgive me because I don't remember the bill numbers, but I saw twin bills both from the House and the Senate about lobbyists, and... but I saw twin bills both from the House and the Senate about lobbyists and lobbying. And you know, my idea of lobbying is calling each person on whatever government body it is and saying, this is what I think you need to do. Is there a different definition of lobbying than what I just said?
Yes, Mr. Reefer, there is. Generally speaking, under Florida law, most especially as it relates to chapter 112 of the Ethics Code, when you start talking about what a lobbyist can and can't do, what contributions can be made. A lobbyist is somebody who is paid to advocate for the legislature or some other governmental body. There's a registrate, you have to register in the state as a lobbyist. And so a lobbyist is not simply somebody who is advocating a position to public officials. It's not uncommon in this community for you to have residents who may wish to reach all four or seven of you and say, hey, for example, we, we really need a new dog park and I want all of you to consider this. Are all merits of dog parks or pickleball courts or whatever the thing is? That's not lobbying, that's advocating. Lobbyist involves being paid to do that, you know, whereas if somebody from the National Pickleball Association, government relations team, whose job it is to persuade and inform government officials, that's typically the construct in which you're actually talking about lobbying in the construct of Florida law. Of course, how people use it colloquially might be different, but for purposes of Florida law generally, a lobbyist is somebody who is paid and registered to advocate policy positions before governmental bodies.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, that confirms you're never too old to stop learning.
The Mr. Smith Goes to Washington approach is still what a lot of people think of lobbying. And there are a lot more advocated.
The way I was reading it was that we're stripping more of, basically it looked to me like they were putting, trying to put more distance between us and the community. So I just wanted to touch on that. Are there any bills that you have on your radar right now?
Principally for me, as you might imagine, given some of the matters I'm involved in in other communities, the short-term rental bill is the one I'm following the closest. I have mediation in seven or eight different cases tomorrow about short-term rentals. This session is proceeding a little earlier than some others. And so it's a little atypical to have bills, so many bills that were filed and that already got through a committee. But we're still trying to assess the landscape of what's been filed. And according to legislative calendar today and tomorrow's really the last day to file full bills and get them committee assignments. So we have to see, which we try to wait until the hoppers close to see what's been put in.
Okay. And one more item that I saw was about permitting. I've seen, I think there were two or three different versions of similar bills. They were all pointing towards expedited process.
Correct.
Now, in the case of Bel Air Beach, we have a two-step process. We have a review here in Bel Air Beach and then it goes to the county. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so ultimately, because we're contracting services with the county, we would still be responsible if one of these bills were to make it through where we're in expedited situation.
Sure, and without speaking to the specific language of those bills, like what I can tell you is most especially in the last three years, you've seen a transition, especially coming out of the fallout of Ian and Dalia and other storms that we've had. There was well, hey, what's emerged is a trend towards private providers, which is a way for people to pay somebody to say, hey, I'm, I'm going to do the review for the government and over to the government and say, do you guys object to this review that I, this, you know, private, private provider have done? And I'm paraphrasing and trying to simplify, but a lot of what, what's been put in in the last few years is like you say, hey, if a private provider presents it to you and you don't give it any review or comments in X amount of time, well, then that's deemed good enough. And there's been some pushback and I know there are proposals in the current legislature speaking to some of that process and, you know, permitting deadlines of, well, if they don't, you know, you can't sit on my permit for 90 days and not do anything. If it's not done, then sort of this like pocket approval approach. For obvious safety concern reasons, there's, you know, a discourse being had on that issue. Once we have the bills filed again, I'll get you a more substantive commentary on what that might be in this community specifically.
Okay, I appreciate it. One last chance, anyone have any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. More, I appreciate it. Now we're up to item seven, the city manager's report, Mr. Reefer.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Gulf Boulevard, Boulevard Undergrounding Project, I actually spoke with Duke Energy today. They have come, they have gotten their contractor that was putting the conduit cases in the ground that were covered, that were brought up at previous meeting in full compliance. Councilman Baker helped assist in the process of drawing attention to it. But it's good to know that now we're, you know, in full compliance, moving forward in the assurance unit. We wouldn't have any more uncovered boxes in the ground. I also found out through the conversation that Duke Energy, at least is what they're telling me, they're planning to start their wiring project of Phase One in late first quarter. So hopefully by February to March, they're getting started on Phase One. And, and you know, we're working through the design Phase Two, which is the north of Codway Boulevard. So just keep on trying to get things to move through, it's a drawn-out project. But we are ahead of every other city on the beach. So it's a good position to be in. I think it gives us an advantage to, to not get kind of held up from, from other factors. So that makes me happy. Stormwater improvement projects, we've been talking about this for over a year now. Started with the bond issue that is now, we received our bids and that is one of the items on the agenda tonight to recommend an award for the project. We have the RFP for auditing services. This is because our old agreement is, it's coming to an end and we need to go back out to RFP. One of the requirements for selecting an auditor is you have to form your audit selection committee. We talked about this last month's meeting. And at this point, we have the resolution that appoints our citizens advisory committee to being the audit committee, but it also needs an appointment of a council member to be the chair of that committee. So that's something I'd like to figure out tonight through the council. Then our code review service, review services project that is going to kick off at our work session on January 22nd. So in two weeks, we're going to have our contractor from Calvin Giorno Associates come in. His name's Mr. Luis Serna. And he's going to give us an introduction to the whole project and talk about the steps that we're going through. I will also be inviting the planning zoning board, who will function as our land development board for the project. So we'll have a lot to do. I'd like to mention Health and Wellness Fair, it's coming up on this Saturday, which is the 13th of January. And it's from 10:30 to 1:30. We have, I don't know, 26 vendors coming. So it should be a good event. This is the actual third time, third annual. And you know, it's a good, it's a good chance to come out, meet, meet other residents and see some of the local providers, get information, get samples. So it's, it's a nice quick event. We provide coffee and other, other goodies, so please come out. And lastly, I'd like to mention that our new city clerk, Ms. Rose, received her certified municipal clerk, certification of the International Institute of Municipal Clarks. So it's a CMC certification, which is a big deal in being a city clerk. And happy to say that she's earned it and I'd like to congratulate her.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, you've, you've just told us that we need to appoint a chair for the audit selection committee and it needs to be someone on the council, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do I have anyone that is interested in that position?
I would move for council member Kim. That was the main reason I wanted to wait the last time we discussed this. I think her background and resume would do very well for this position.
Okay, great. Well, it sounds like we have, we have a candidate. Do we need to take a formal vote or is that good enough?
I think it would be appropriate just to, if, if Ms. Ellie would affirm that she's interested in that, at least some world consensus.
Okay, all right. So we have in front of us a, we need to vote for chair of the audit selection committee. And I think we can do it with an all in favor for Ms. Kim Shaw Elliott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So you had your opportunity. All right, congratulations. Thank you so much for volunteering. All right, now we are up to the city clerk report. Ms. Rose, you have the floor.
Thank you. So in the packet, I did include a summary of my duties as I've been trying to come on board and learn all of the new processes and laws that were a little bit different from where I came from. But I'm just trying to get started and see where we go. I would like to mention though, that I did not include the quarterly reports for the committees. And the Board of Adjustment Chair, Mike Kelly, is here and would like to address counsel.
Counsel, any questions or comments? All right, well, we're glad to have you here and we appreciate you keeping us up to date on everything and actually getting caught up in such a short time.
Thank you.
All right, so now we are up to items nine through 11. This is the consent agenda. This is for approval of the December 4th, 2023 city council meeting minutes, approval of the December 11th, 2023 special city council meeting minutes, and approval of the December 18th, 2023 city council work session minutes. Again, thank you Renee for keeping us up to date, nice job on that. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, that's right, that was it.
Motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kim Shaw Elliott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. Now we are on to the regular agenda, item number 12. This is for consideration of awarding project bid B 23-01 for street drainage improvements from Ninth Street to Morgan Drive. Mr. Reefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So like I mentioned in my report earlier, we received the bids for the upcoming stormwater improvement project. And it's covering the rest of the 2016 update to the stormwater master drainage plan. We had two contractors come in through DemandStar, which is an online bidding platform. Two reputable companies, one was the Kamiga Ruwets Incorporated, which did our last project. And the other was Harbor Contracting LLC. We actually did extend that deadline a week at the request of the contractors to give them ample time to get this in. So the total bid, the lowest bidder was Harbor Contract, Contracting LLC. I provided the engineering from Gemini Engineering Sciences, their report and analysis of the two bids. And they were able to obtain a letter of recommendation from the city of Indian Rocks Beach, who was an active project with Harbor Contracting. And also did some research on the, the other jobs that they had performed. Reached out to the president owner of Harbor Contracting LLC and confirmed that he had the capability of getting started on this project, you know, in the very near future. And I actually did receive email from the owner and president. And he gave us a list of all his subcontractors' plans he uses. He says that he is looking forward to working on this project. So he said he will get started on ASAP with the award. And it is my recommendation to the council based on the engineering report and the information we got back and recommendations that we award the lowest bidder for this project in the amount of $3,999,821.40. And that was actually lower than the other bidder by $476,340.50.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Would any citizen like to comment on awarding this project? Nope, right, citizen comments are closed. Counsel, I'm going to need a motion to award project bid B 23-01 to Harbor Contracting LLC. Do I have a motion?
I move that we award the project bid number B 23-01 for the street drainage improvements from Ninth Street to Morgan Drive to Harbor Contracting in the amount of $3,999,821.40 and the all-important 40 cents.
Do I have a second? No second?
Excuse me, is there any discussion about the motion?
The motion only gets us to discussion. So that's the way you move forward to discussion. So I need a second before we can even talk about it.
Possible.
All right. Seconded by Kim Shaw Elliott. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this project has been handled very, very well from our city manager from the design process that we went through, as well as the bidding process for the actual construction. It was approved and recommended by the design firm who provided the design for this complete project. It came in within budget. It came with a very high recommendation by a neighboring city who has used this contractor previously. And I think we're ready to go.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Yes, Mr. Baker.
On November 6th of this year, Gemini Engineering, Mr. Flutie came in to present this.
I'm sorry, November Baker, can you just speak into the microphone just for a second?
So I apologize. I repeat, on November 6th, Gemini Engineering came in to present this plan in front of council. And before we took citizens' comments, there was a resident, now a council person, that brought up very serious remarks like, what is this going to change? When I said, Mr. Flutie, after looking at the design, talking during work sessions, once these valves are closed, water is going to be trapped in the streets. There's no way this water is going to be removed unless there's a pump or a gate forced to move out. His answer to me was, I agree. And that can be found at 319 in the minutes of that meeting. This is, this is a typical metaphor of put a footstick on a pig. Yes, we're going to put, pay some of the streets here, as he's noted, one inch of blacktop. All right, you can go down my street, you can go down Sixth Street, Seventh Street, Fifth Street, all streets that were recently done. Go down 12th Street, see how many cracks are in there. And how long has that project been done? Very short. All right, I have no way of voting for this project. This is, this is just wasting our taxpayers' money. We need to seriously find a way and a solution to resolve this flooding issue. Flooding is only getting worse in this community. We're supposedly a premier city, must be a premier city. Attack problems that really are necessary to attack. Underground, underground wiring is breached. You could have took that $5 million and put it to a better use.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Councilmember Elliott, do you have any comments?
I do. I have concerns about this also. Part of it is a sense of urgency and I don't want to be any impotent to bring about improvements that we need. At the same time, I'm a little concerned as to understanding what it will actually accomplish. Is it more of an aesthetic thing and repairing the streets? Or is it actually improving the ability to withstand many of the weather conditions that we're going to be having in the very near future? We've already had a flood incident just a few weeks ago. There might be another one tonight that leads. That leads to the urgency to get something started and finished. At the same time, I'm concerned about how much money is going to be spent to not end up with anything that's improved. We had the opportunity for a bond issue, with more resources coming in and to be able to do it right. So I have two questions. One is, what is different about what this project will produce compared to what our current conditions are, if they were working? And secondly, if there are no improvements over our current conditions, would this project allow later improvements without additional cost? I understand incremental cost to do something more, but will there be building costs to undo something we've just done?
Mr. Reefer, would you like to address council members' comments?
Yes, I think in the area that you mentioned, a change in the way that the flooding occurs, I think the most significant change to the actual stormwater drainage would be what is proposed at the stormwater swale at Bayside Park. He is adding, our engineer, Larry Flutie, he's adding two inlets, which are the F-type inlets, the great ones that we have in other parts of the city we did on previous projects. He's adding those right there at the retention pond and the swale to help add additional drainage from the Ninth Street slash Bayside Park area. He's also extending out the pipe from the swale to install a twenty-four-inch check valve, which will actually prevent the water coming back up through underneath Harbor Drive into the retention pond, which backflows into Cedar Drive and Palm Drive. I think that'll make a significant difference. It'll provide protection against backflow and flooding up to about, I'd say, a little over four and a half feet elevation of flooding, just based on what we saw the last storm. So I think that is significant. You can't stop everything, because if you get tide, water's coming in high enough, it's going to go right over the road. It's going to come right into everybody's property. It's just nothing you can do about. And that's, in my mind, is a situation that, you know, you can... We're getting good, good return for what, what we can install without some new elaborate plan, which can be looked at in the future. We've talked a lot about pumps. There may be some areas that we can apply pumps in the city, but I think in general, from talking to the engineers, talking to the pump manufacturers, that is going to be a much more, a pricier design. And I don't know, I'd like to see the numbers on what the return would be for the cost of things that are on it. So when you asked me about finishing up these projects, which are from the 2016 update to the master plan, unfortunately, we did some projects in the south. There have been improvements, but like we see outside of the Eighth Street, it's just not quite what we wanted. And a lot had to do with that, again, the check valve at the park, it doesn't open up unless the tide gets low enough. So in my mind, it's something that we should circle back around and look at options. But when we're talking about this project and wrapping up the rest of the master plan, we kind of already got past that part of the city. And this is, this has been on the scheduled list of about ten different BMPs, we call them, that were laid out in priority order to take care of things like the pavement cracking, the valley curve. It's all broken up and has a lot of puddling in it. Areas that residents in those streets have expressed concern and want to be, you know, and in those streets that we're talking about, we're talking about from, we just finished up Twelfth, Thirteenth, we're talking about Fourteenth, Fifteenth, Sixteenth, Seventeenth, Eighteenth to Bay Shore, you know, Nineteenth, Twentieth, all those streets and gutters are in very, very bad condition. And in my five years of working for the city, and especially working in the Public Works Department, I've had a lot of conversations with residents in those areas to want the improvements done and back and replacing the curb. And another point was the asphalt that we are installing. In past projects, we were milling one inch and resurfacing one inch. At the request of Councilmember Roberts, we are using a higher grade of asphalt, and we're actually milling an inch and putting back one point five inch. So it is, there is a difference there. After that, you know, there's areas of this project that we know, we have known infiltration, we have pipe damage, that we're getting a good bid, a good price to go through and take care of a lot of that CIPP lining that needs to be done, that is maintenance, that has been delayed to get a better price through this project. So I mean, that's, when you ask the question of what we're doing and why I think this project is important, what impact we're seeing, that comes to my mind.
If, if there is a later study that determines that there are more opportunities for flood control measures, would implementing those measures involve additional cost because of what we've just done?
If we're talking about installing a pump system, I think the ideal place to start is where we're seeing the worst problem, which is Seventh and Eighth Street. And right now, we've already gone through there. So when you ask me, doing this project, is it going to incur more cost? And if we delay this project, I do not believe it would, because we're not even touching that area.
I guess another way to ask the question would be, is it cheaper to do it all at one time versus in stages?
Well, that was the idea through kind of wrapping up the master plan, was we took out that number, that two point one million, with the idea of taking care of the rest of the work that was planned. Yeah, I guess if we want to go back and do another larger bond issue, have more, you know... I think the intent at the time was, we had the master plan, we were working through it. How can we get the rest of it done quicker, you know, with the money that we have currently? But I think kind of what we're talking about now is, you know, going above and beyond what our original master plan was. But I think what the important factor of the master plan was, a lot of it is just general maintenance that needs to be done through the system, the pipes, the gutters throughout the city. Like I said, the CIPP lining, that is the best way to repair some of this, the breaking down of the pipes, that just deep infrastructure repair. So I think we're talking like two different scopes of planning. I think we need to go through and get, kind of get the basics done. And then we go back to the planning, the drawing board, and we try to figure out, what can we do to make the cities, the streets better? Up to a certain point, obviously, we can't stop everything. But I think that is going to be a longer process that really needs to be examined.
I don't want to stand in the way of a long thought-out project. And I don't like having crumbling streets, either. They look terrible. So this is not a premier community that we say we are when we have streets that look the way they do. I would like to suggest to our council that as we go for additional planning going forward, that we really seriously look at improvements. Because I think we're at a critical stage in terms of the safety of our homes here. And if we don't act fast, we could lose them. And we're looking at probably, what, maybe at least eighty percent of the homes in this community are single-story homes that don't have accommodations for water flowing through them. And we know we have continual flooding. And it's just a matter of time on what it may hit us. So I think we need to plan for that very carefully.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Other comments? Yes, Mr. Reefer?
It's peculiar that this thing came out in 2016, okay? What, seven, eight years ago, all right? Right after Hermine, okay, which we, was it Tropical Storm when it went past us? It was probably eighty miles along the coast. It had six inches of rain in that storm. Then we had a gout at Herman. And we had this storm in twelve fifteen, twelve sixteen, just this past month. And like you said, there's going to be another one tomorrow night possibly. This is foolish spending. I mean, when Mr. Flutie came in, I said, when you put these other drains in that you're talking about, you're going to accumulate maybe three hundred more gallons. When the valve's closed, three hundred gallons gives you one. Nothing, okay? There's no relief here. Let's do this right. This is four million dollars of your tax money, your citizens. Wait, what person, again, would bring a contractor in to their home and say, I have a problem here, can you repair? And he says, and the contractor will say, I can do the job for you, but you're going to get the same results. Only government would spend money on something like that. Not one responsible citizen. There's no way I would vote for this project. This is just, this is just foolish money.
All right, I appreciate, I appreciate your thoughts on that. I'm going to weigh in on this. We made a promise to this city that we would take care of these regular maintenance issues. We do have deteriorating pipes, we have deteriorating gutters, we have crumbling streets. No, this is not going to solve a problem with tidal storm surge and torrential downpours whenever the, whenever the check valves are closed. However, we were told by Mr. Flutie that we could, if we decided to do something with pump motors, it would, it would... I think it was also the pump motor company. They stated that, yes, we could drop in a well anywhere on any one of these pipes that's collecting water and tap right in and pump it out. So I think if we did that, it would be another project above and beyond what we already promised the city that we would do. Because it's been a continuous issue. It's not just for Seventh and Eighth and Ninth Street, it's for the entire city. So I'm, I'm going to vote yes on this and get this project done. But I am still wide open to listening to what's next and how do we eliminate this rainwater and stormwater whenever it comes in, in those lower-lying areas. It's very important. But we still have to have the rest of the infrastructure upgraded and repaired because it's a requirement for all of our city, not just one or two streets. So I said my piece on that. Any other comments? Nope? Yes, Mr. Roberts, go ahead. You have the floor.
There's really two things that Kim discussed in detail for a couple of years regarding... There will always be a flooding challenge when we have a high tide and a lot of rain. That water is not going to leave the streets ever. Now, I know Councilmember Banker was a very strong opponent of this similar type of project that we did on Twelfth and Thirteenth Street. So I'm a little confused by his response today, but that's okay. The other question you sort of had was with the streets themselves, if we were to put off this project, where we have paved streets that are cracking, it can actually create a scenario where we will have to spend more money because the water can go down through and start damaging the base. Then we cannot come along and simply do what we're going to do for this particular project. So that can cost the city more money down the road. And I agree with the city manager and the mayor, what both of them were saying. This is a maintenance project. Every city in town around goes and evaluates the current status of their streets. And if they warrant repair and/or replacement, that's part of the budget to take care of that. And that's really what we're doing here. And while we're at it, we're also taking a look at if there may be some underground pipes that are damaged also. So this isn't anything out of the norm. I agree that if there's some other unique approaches we can use in the future to somehow address flooding in the streets, we should pursue that. But it's almost always going to create a scenario where it's very, very, very expensive. And anything with stormwater systems, you know, there's never a goal to create a situation where you're going to have a hundred percent removal of stormwater issues. It's too expensive, never going to happen. So that's where we are.
Since my name is mentioned?
Yes.
Okay, Twelfth and Thirteenth Street had numerous collapsed pipes and culvert damage. Okay, that's why I was for that project. That project should have gone through. I also mentioned wholeheartedly that we need, back then, a real source to get rid of this water. And as M W O's in here, they said clearly, if you did this right, probably a cat-three storm would send all of these streets. Now, four million dollars is in front of us. This thing got passed tonight, we would just be talking about this for another six years. And nothing would get done. That's how government works. And now we have this thing in front of us, we have a bond. Let's retool this and do this thing. If we have to take a little bit more money to get this done right, let's make Ninth Street our city hall, Ninth Street residence. As M W O Pump said, try one or two streets, see how it works, okay? And then you may want to try a couple more streets, all right? Let's make this the premier example of flood rescue. And that's all I have to say. I'm not voting.
Mr. Banker, I'm going to leave you with the last word, and I'm going to call for a vote. Renee, would you please call a roll, please?
Councilmember Bankard?
No.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw Elliott?
Yes.
And Mayor Gaddis.
Yes, so it's three to one. And Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to award contract to Harbor Contracting LLC.
Uh, we need a majority?
You need a majority of the council, as seated.
As seated?
As seated. It's not four, it's seven, there's no sense. Just as if, just as if we had normally had a meeting and five people shut up. The vote is, the majority of the council, in this instance, it's the majority of the council as seated. You have a four-member commission, a majority is three members.
Question to the Attorney General, a question. Then why do you need four people to have a meeting? I understand more, but I mean, if it's just a makeup then?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding your question, Mr. Reefer.
Well, you need four to discuss the meeting, okay?
Yes, sir.
And you need four to pass a vote when you have, the charter says you need seven. I believe our charter also says you need four to pass a vote, too.
I don't believe that's...
I'm not looking at the charter in right this moment, as I was not...
I think it's different if you don't have enough members.
I'm not sure. I'm happy to review the matter, Mr. Banker. I will tell you, in my practice, I have served on councils that have had less than the full composition of that board. And traditionally, while a quorum is required for you to be able to, and your quorum is in fact defined by your charter, a majority vote of the council is seated is typically required of any, of any matter, not a majority of the members that are not there. In that case, everything would have to be unanimous going forward. I don't believe that aligns with the concept, but I'm happy to look at it as I was not presented with the question prior to this meeting.
I'll add a comment to that. If, if you're sitting on a council where there's one member that always votes no, all business would cease within the community. So there's just no way that that would be in our charter. However, I will give you time to look that up and just make, make it feel good, that we are doing the right thing.
So Section 2.07 of your charter says, "A quorum. Acceptance provided in 2.06C, a majority of the council shall constitute a quorum. No action of the council shall be valid unless adopted by a affirmative vote of at least..." of at least four members of the council." So no action of the council shall be valid unless adopted by the affirmative vote of at least four members of the council is in Section 2.07 of your city charter in that you do have four members reading that in context. It says, "City council meetings." I'm just trying to read it. I'm trying to read the whole thing to make sure I'm not missing any context. And again, I had not been presented with the query prior. Voting on ordinance and resolutions shall be by roll call and recorded by the city clerk. Let me see what the exception referenced is. 2.06(c) is filling vacancies. A vacancy on the council shall be filled by a majority vote of the remaining members of the council. Any person appointed by council to fill a vacancy shall hold office until the next annual election. If at any time the membership of the council is reduced to less than a quorum, the remaining members may, by majority vote, appoint additional members in conformity with this section or shall call for a special election. So it does contemplate less than a... All four members voting to fill the vacancy. And that is taken from Section 2.06(c), looking to Section 2... 2.07. Acceptance provided in the section, "Majority of the council shall constitute a quorum. No action of the council shall be valid unless adopted by the affirmative vote of at least four members of the council." Reading those together in context, I would have to agree with Member Bankard that your charter does in fact provide that no action of the council is valid unless adopted by affirmative vote of at least four members of the council. You have four members, which again is not a traditional construct. It's contemplating no action of the council shall be valid unless adopted. That presumes the construct of you having seven members. But... Forgive my frustration as I was...
It's quite all right. Would you like a few minutes of...
If we could take a moment to reassess...
Let's say ten. Do you think that's enough?
More than enough, Mayor. I don't think it should take that long. I agree with the language and need to read in context.
All right. We'll be back at seven twenty-two. All right. We're back. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. And as my Austin supervisors, thank you for the indulgence of the recess for the opportunity to analyze this. I've searched for majority votes and looked at what this states. The language is explicit in quorum that unless there's a vacancy, a majority of the council is a quorum. But no action of the council is valid unless adopted by affirmative vote of at least four members of the council. That could read in different fashion. The majority of the remainder of the council could read in a few different configurations. That configuration is explicit. It is four members of the council must approve something to be... In order for it to be adopted by this council. So I would stand by my initial impression upon review of the language of Member Bankard is correct. It fails as a three-one vote because it is not an official act adopted by a vote of at least four members of the council. There's no modifying language after council to say the council is seated or the council is subject to vacancies. It is simply four members of the council. It's an independent clause from the exception referencing 2.06(c), the vacancy appointment procedure. So the proposed bid award fails on a three-one vote.
Thank you very much. And congratulations, Mr. Bankard. And also, I'd like to thank the legislature in Florida, in Tallahassee, for really sticking it to the city of Ballard Beach. All right. Now we're moving on to item number thirteen. This is for authorization of a sole-source purchase of a lock row, lock stop, twenty-four-inch valve for street and drainage improvements, Project B twenty-three dash zero one. Since the project has not been awarded, is it... Do we vote on this anyway in the event that... I don't know how to handle this, actually. We need four votes to proceed. Remember, Bankard is not in our hands with this.
You can still put the valve? I need to have the outfall, the culvert changed to fit with it.
The valve is at the end point. Where the discharge, I'm sorry. Is that...
Yeah, it's at the discharge, but the way it is now, it's...
I'm sorry.
At this point, it appears we're having a substantive discussion on the matter. You may wish to just put it to...
Correct. All right. Mr. Reifler, would you just explain what it is we're discussing? And they will get your citizens' comments.
Sure. So what this is, is this is part of the planned project. It is the purchase of a twenty-four-inch check valve. This is the same check valves we've been using throughout the city. They've proven to work well as long as you keep up with the maintenance on them. But in experience of all types of these valves, this still is the recommended design for a valve, and they have been successful throughout the city. So this, you know, per our purchasing procedures, we are allowed to make this purchase based on it being a patented sole-source purchase. So I was recommending that we approve the purchases of the valve because it will stay in alliance of... It'll maintain the continuity of the valves we've been using. And it is still recommended by our engineer in other cities. So... Yeah, it is... I mean, purchasing the valve as a twenty-four-inch valve, we have other twenty-four-inch valve pipes. I don't see how we would change the design of what we're trying to do before it. So this may be still something under consideration because it's one new unit and it's a valve that we can use. So I presented it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Reifler. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Anyone like to make a comment on this topic? Okay. I'm going to need a motion to authorize this purchase.
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Elliott. Mr. Bankard, do you have the floor?
What size is the discharge pipe now? If the swell is twenty-four inches?
Okay.
Mr. Speaker, if I may?
Yes.
If I understand the memorandum, the city manager has authority to make any expenditures under $10,000. Is that correct? So if there's something that this project needs that would have been supplied by the stormwater project, would that be within your authority to authorize those expenditures? In other words, would it be probably less than a $10,000 expense?
Well, the reason... I mean, that is our government quoted price. The reason that we do it this way is because we can get a better deal for these valves if we purchase it as a government entity, supposed to including in the project. So in the past, we've made all these purchases at the government quoted prices. But the way the purchasing policy from our charter reads, I'm allowed to purchase noncompetitive supplies in excess of $10,000 provided authorized funds are available. The animal budget and the records of purchasing exceeding the $10,000 are available to Austin immediately by public. So earlier in that section, it says expenditures between $10,000 and $25,000.
I apologize, but I'm not hearing very well.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I'm just... And I'll go to the city attorney just for his interpretation. But the way I understood it was that, you know, once you get between $10,000 and $25,000, that it can be approved upon receipt of at least three written bids or proposals. But then there's an exception for noncompetitive supplies. So that's the reason.
The language... City attorney speaking. The language being referenced is not in the charter. It is in your code of ordinances. It's in your code of ordinances in Chapter Two, Section 2 dash 350. I think what the manager is saying is between the range of $5,000 and $10,000. He has some authority. He may authorize an expenditure in excess of five, not more than ten, if it's within the approved city budget with the specific approval of the city council upon receipt of at least two written bids. So if he's over five... Under five, he can just go get it. Over five, but less than ten, he's got to show you that, hey, I've gotten some written bids, and these are the costs. Your question is a little different than that. From as I'm understanding your question, Member Shaw Elliott, and forgive me if I'm mischaracterizing it, I was understanding your question to say, beyond the purchase of this valve, if there are other elements that would be required for the installation of this valve, will those elements cost less than $10,000? Was that your question? Or would...
Or would they... Whether, regardless of the amount, would they be within his authority to authorize that purchase?
Yeah. And again, it's going to come down to, I think, on some level, his authorization set forth in 2 dash 350. If those are less than $5,000, he has some authority. If it's over five but less than ten, he has slightly less authority. And while I do not know, and I'm not involved at all in the administration of capital improvement projects, I want to be very clear about that. If... I'm not sure that Manager Reifler is in a position... I think, I suspect, he was approaching this action item presuming the other action item may have been approved. Absent its approval, I don't know if he has done analysis on what he would need in the ways of labor and materials to implement this hardware once purchased. I think his construct was to acquire this hardware and install it as part of that project. That project having failed, I think he's left with questions. He may not be in a position to answer you on specific costs. But again, as I am not involved in capital improvement projects and decisions, I defer to the manager.
Mr. Reifler, let me ask you a question. Is this valve... Was your intention to replace an existing valve? Or was this for a brand-new valve? The brand-new...
Brand-new valve for this valve.
Okay. So if we approved this, you would have an extra valve just sitting around?
Correct. At this point, it was... The plan was part of the project, so I guess I...
Okay.
Is there a valve in there now?
No.
Well, that's why I say you could put this valve on that way. A good angle and a culvert. It would need some modification.
Right. It could go on that way, is what I'm saying. Simple modification. Yes, Mr. Roberts?
And we're going to... You would know this much better than I, but in a previous life working for a county, I know some people that got extended, non-paid vacations because of purchasing violations where you tried to say, okay, we're splitting this up. You know, we're lining the valve now. We're going to have to spend money on some other stuff. So they were able to keep the cost downward below certain purchasing values. And you cannot do that. If it's all related to a project, somebody's going to throw a red flag and say, that's a no.
I think what Member Roberts is referencing are the requirements of the CCNA and other purchasing measures. You are correct to say that you cannot... You can't say, well... You can't take a project to... For instance, in the Ethics Code, as I often teach, you're not allowed to get... You have to report a gift that's over $100. You can't say, well, this was a $95 gift on Tuesday, and then I got a $95 gift on Wednesday, and then I got a knife. I thought, now you got, you know, a sum total of nearly $300 from this person. And, you know, again, the same is true of in the procurement world. Again, because I think there are a lot of questions. You know, Member Bankard is taking the position that, hey, this is an easy fix and easily adapted. As we sit here now, I... That may be true. I don't know. I don't know what the manager may need, again, in terms of parts and labor, nor am I aligning on it. But we would have to look at that as its totality and not say, well, this part costs this much and this part costs that much. You know, this is $6,000. That's $5,000, and the labor's $3,000. So we never went over 10. You would look at that as potentially going over 10. And again, that's putting aside the CCNA for home. So, which is the competitive bidding statute. So again, that's yes pending contours and details.
I'm just pointing out that this valve probably has a female sleeve attached to it. And they don't want to stay without too much trouble. That's what I...
I think the problem is, is that the way that this purchase request is written, it's saying for Project B twenty-three dash zero one. Do we need to make a motion to amend the motion? To just say, I need a check valve? Or do you even need a check valve anymore? And you prefer to wait until we get this project resolved?
At this point, just because everything kind of got changed, I recommend that we just wait because if I can figure out something else in the near future, then we can just bring it to the next...
I wish I asked you that 10 minutes ago.
Motion table.
All right. There's a motion table. There's no discussion. I need someone to second that motion.
Second.
Second. All right. This is for a motion table. All in favor?
Aye.
Any of those? All right. It's tabled. All right. Now we're on to item thirteen dot one. This is for electing a vice mayor to replace Jody Schur. I'm going to handle this in this order so everyone knows what I'm doing. The first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to take nominations. I'm going to write them down. Then we're going to do... We're going to go to citizen comment... I'm sorry. We're going to go to citizen comments to discuss whoever is nominated and give them the opportunity to do that. And then we're going to take an informal vote on the nominations to see if we have a majority. If we have a majority, then we'll need a motion to elect the winner to become the seat of vice mayor. Mr. Moore, did I get that right?
I believe so, Mayor.
Okay. Cool. All right. So do we have any nominations? All right. We have one for Frank Bankard. I would like to nominate Lloyd Roberts. Do we have any other nominations? All right. Seeing as we have no other nominations, we have Frank Bankard and Lloyd Roberts. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to comment on these two nominees?
Hi, Mike Kelly, 2740 Abiscus Drive. I strongly support the mayor's nominating Lloyd Roberts with all your background that you had at Switmud, your engineering background, understanding of the city, your experience with the city. I think he is the candidate that should be your vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have any other citizens that would like to make a comment? Seeing as we have none, comments are closed. All right. So now what we're going to do is we're going to do an informal vote. So if you would, would you please call the roll? And let's get a count here.
Councilmember Bankard?
Myself, Bankard.
Councilmember Roberts?
Lloyd Roberts.
Councilmember Shaw Elliott?
Mr. Roberts.
And Mayor Gaddis?
Mr. Roberts. And I believe that that only requires a majority.
Mayor, as I look at your charter, the language of your charter is it says, "No action of the council shall be valid unless adopted by the affirmative vote of these four members of the council." You are attempting to take the action of identifying and appointing the vice mayor that's being done by the council. It would be my opinion, consistent with that language, that you need four members of the council to agree. Absent an agreement, you would continue to proceed without a vice mayor at this stage.
Okay. So here... So in that case, right now, the majority is three to one for Mr. Roberts. Now we're going to need a motion to... A motion to elect the winner of that vote. So do I have a motion to move forward with Lloyd Roberts as vice mayor?
Can we do that?
What's that?
Can we do that?
No. That was an informal vote. So we have a majority to bring forward. Whenever we actually do the motion, now that's... If we have to... Whenever we actually do the motion, now that's, if we have two people, then we can actually vote on two of that vote. All right, so do I have a, okay, so Lloyd Roberts, and do I have a second?
Uh, yeah, I have a second.
Okay, second, all right. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you very much for the nomination. Way back when, when I first decided to express interest for the city of Ballard Beach, I was actually very interested in mayor position. But having spoken with Mr. Gaddis, that's, and I mean some other people, he was clearly the best person to fill the position of mayor. I feel very confident that anytime I would need to step in and sit in the mayor's seat for Mayor Gaddis as the vice mayor, I would love that opportunity. I have taken the opportunity to sometimes sit in, based on his request, when he put in meetings, some meetings representing our city. I feel like I have the background and the education and the skills set to support this city very well, and I would look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Do we have any other comments?
I don't think Mr. Roberts is qualified to be vice mayor. He's, I think I'm a senior member of council here besides Mr. Mayor. Apparently, I know the charter a lot better than most of these council members. My history shows that man sitting in that chair, I nominated him back in March last twenty-one, twenty-two, in a one-twenty-eight month service looking for city manager, and we just gave this man an award tonight for excellence. My background for infrastructure, I think, is two of all, like anybody here. A, I ran meetings to six thousand members, I'm a pretty good student of Robert's roles. I don't think we have the proper candidate, and I don't believe we can put him on, going through those.
All right, any other comments?
I, I think we have two qualified candidates who bring very different things to the table. I recognize that there have been divergent views and that there's been some contention when those views are expressed. It presents some interesting opportunities when you look at two people with opposing views are forced to work together. So that, that raises some interesting opportunities here, but I believe both people are qualified.
Thank you very much. I'm not going to make any comments. Instead, I'm going to call for a vote. Ms. Rose, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard.
There you go.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis.
Yes, and so I will continue without a vice mayor, and we'll see how it goes. All right, I'm up for the challenge, by the way. All right, now we are up to item number fourteen, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Seeing as we have none, now we're on to council comments. This month, we begin with council member Roberts.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Mr. Kelly, I apologize deeply because you've been waiting all night and you've been very patient. So what I would like to do is bring Mike Kelly in for a board of adjustments report.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. And thank you, Renee. We're getting used to a lot of new procedures here, and this is just a minor one. Renee asked me to stop in tonight if available to give you a report about the board adjustment. These are quarterly reports, so for the past three months, the board has actually had two meetings. We had one in October, well, Patty was still here. We had one in December, which Renee ran very, very well. And it's, we had four different residents who wanted anything from pools to rezoning of lots to encroachments into setbacks for improvements to their homes, and the board did an outstanding job. Once again, the issues about pools being above the crown of the road is a primary one. Kyle's already got a plan to have it taken care of in the new year. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad, I will make the comment to that our board, because we're getting so many meetings and I think so much different experience, so many different residents. We have a very, very well-groomed and well-informed board and alternates. We've been using our alternates as well. So I'm thankful for the choice that the council made, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Council? Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I appreciate your patience, and I appreciate your service to our community.
You're keeping us interested tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now we're on to council comments. This month, we begin with council member Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really saddened, for lack of a better word, of the fact that we were reduced to four council members at this particular time. I know I can't walk everybody's shoes, and I think I made that comment before. I have taken the opportunity to listen to a presentation that I believe was sponsored by the Florida League Cities concerning the Form Six, and have compared that to the Form One, which is why I'm still here, because I really don't think personally, again, it could be different for other people, that the additional information that's going to be required for the Form Six is that significant. So I'm really speaking to people that may be listening to this meeting tonight that are out there and live in our city so that some additional citizens will step forward and hopefully take other positions on our city council. It's, it's important. And a funny story, I was just talking to somebody tonight that owns a pretty significant-sized business. And the reason I'm telling this story is I always feel like if there's bad people out there and they want to find out about financial situations of anybody, they can do it. This person I was talking with tonight actually got a phone call that came on his cell phone number that had his bank's, his business bank's name on it. And after several questions, and this person knew his account for his corporation, knew how much money he had in the accounts, he kept following up with different questions to this man, to where he finally backed him into a corner and the guy admitted he was not with the bank. So the point of that story is, there's people out there that I think are feeling like, well, I really don't want to be in this position because of the Form Six, because it becomes public, and I don't want people knowing that information. And I guess my message is, if people want to find out about your financial situation, they can and they will. So I don't really think that should be a huge reason to not want to come forward and represent our city. So like the mayor said earlier, please, some of the people out there come forward so that we can fill our seven-member council the way it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Now let's go to council member Kim Shaw Elliott.
Well, I'm happy to be here. I appreciate the opportunity to be of service to the community. I look forward to the next year, and I think we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, and I think we've got good people in place now that can work through these challenges and bring about a better community. And I heartily support council member Lloyd's comments that we need others, we need our community active and involved. For those of you that are civic-minded and want to be able to be part of the solutions for this community, I heartily encourage you to step forward.
Thank you. Mr. Baker?
Well, I wasn't going to run, and I didn't file for the appropriate time period, okay? And I was against opening up the charter or opening up the ordinance to extend it a week. And then we had the storm come, and a bunch of residents came up to me and they said, what the hell are you doing about? All right? I just repaired my garage. Got three inches in last night. My neighbor just hasn't been in our home since he died, okay? So I'm thinking, I asked Kyle, I said, is there a message here that I should run for council, all right? Dave, I like you, okay? I think you're a great guy, and maybe you have some differences. I want to work with you. I wanted to work with the other mayor, okay? But I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote on something that I cannot do, all right? As I got thrown under the bus on twelve and thirteenth street, Mr. Roberts, you voted against twelve and thirteenth street, okay? All right, but then you voted for this, all right? So I want to do what's best for the city because I really do love the city, okay? And just like those boxes that broke in Kyle, I mean, you went to Duke, all right? And I don't know who thunder knows that yet. I had some friends from my ocean, forty-eight hours later, those boxes were covered up, all right? So I want to do what's safe for the city with the bullies, okay? I think they were very important. And then I have people that are against me going to tell their shores and saying, well, we don't need our money being spent under safety issues. Those people have right kids. This is just petty bullshit, and that's exactly what.
Mr. Roberts, I'm sorry, Mr. Baker, please refrain from the.
Well, bullshit's not a bear.
Yeah, one more time.
What I'm saying is, I want to serve the people of Ballard Beach, not the, what my, one of the people said, the deceitful tank, they can go pound wherever they want to go pound, all right? But I want to do what's best for the city, what I was inherited ten years ago, and that's all I, that's all I want to do. I volunteer for every event that comes up in the city, every event. I don't go for the photo ops like some of these candidates do. I'm out there seeing bagging, I'm out there, I missed two beach cleanups, okay, since beach cleanup existed. I missed one beach, one bridge cleanup, okay? My back was it, all right? I'm there all the time volunteering, and Kyle can attest to it, all right? So I want to do what's best for the city. I think this is the greatest city with volunteers, all right? And when it came up last year about paying for council, I wanted to go home and volunteer, all right? Picking, picking money out of the taxpayers' pocket and paying for this is nonsense. That's all I am. It happened to me.
All right, well, I hope everyone's watching out there, as you can see where we're at at the moment. It's not a good situation. We desperately need three more council members. We need people that will at least give us the opportunity to decide what's best for the city without being in a stranglehold by any particular one single council member. So if you live on one of the streets that's not going to be paved, you've got crumbling pipes, you have crumbling whatever in your, in your area of the city, and you're unhappy with the outcome of tonight's meeting, I implore you, please, come down, apply, and show up so that we can make an appointment for three more council members. Other than that, thanks to everyone for watching tonight. And would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Motion is made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, good night, everyone.